So I was looking forward to having a cow up here on screen.
The whole steam meeting.
I hope Damon has a cow available. We were at, we were at Roller Shine Winery a while ago and they have a cow, one of those big cows on, on display.
Oh, one of the painted ones from Madison?
Yeah. They must have bought one, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen other creatures like that now. I think down in Florida, they have painted pelicans in Tampa, I believe it is. So the idea is getting around a little. I think the cows must have been first.
All right, it's 6:01 and I believe we have a quorum. We can actually get started because as you alluded to, you know, Jamin wants to stay here till 10:30. So I guess we should just get started on our, our long evening of presentations and discussions. So with that said, um, I guess first we have Ellers up. Or Jamin, are you presenting that?
No, Ellers won't be presenting tonight. I'll take care of this one. First, just so we make sure, so I, I am showing that we're missing Phil, Tom and Jean. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Jean is here as a call in.
Jean is, okay.
We have to, I think we do have to take a roll call. Is, so we're gonna record it?
We can do that. Okay, I will just go in order here. Bear with me. All right. That's okay. Sid Borzma.
Uh, present.
Phil Caravelo.
Here.
All right. Ozzy Doom.
Here.
Ben Healy.
Here.
Regina Hirsch.
Got it.
Fred Hunt.
Here.
Greg Jensen.
Here.
Jean Legaki.
Here.
Tom Mieske. Lisa Reeves.
Here.
Joyce Tokolsky.
Here.
And Brett Schumacher.
Here.
Okay, so we're missing Alder Mieske. That's about it, so.
So Brett felt good that you did it out of, out of alphabetical, so he could always.
I was just wondering that. Was that to keep me at the last place on the list? I'm, I'm not sure.
I guess that's the rules. Brett is always last.
I don't know why. Just give me credit for, for throwing Joyce on there last minute.
I think it's, I think it's order of importance, actually.
Just to make it official, I will do a roll call for Merritt Tim Swadley.
Present.
Nice. All right. Okay, so we will get through this information as quickly as possible. It won't, it won't be quite as in-depth as last meeting. For those of you that missed last meeting, Ellers was here to pretend, to present the financial management plan we've been working on since June-ish. We will be bringing that back, probably not to the next committee of the whole meeting. We do have time to finalize that. We were given a few marching orders at the last committee of the whole meeting. So we'll bring that back at a separate council meeting, just to go through that financial management plan and finalize it. So you'll, you'll have another look at that one. The first item on the agenda, we had to squeeze it in here because we wanted to get it approved and get moving on this, will be to authorize the appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with Ellers to begin the process to amend TIF number four, to allow for sharing with TIF five and TIF eight. So the intent of this would be to basically go through an entire TIF amendment and basically create a donor district out of TIF four to assist with the TIF five and TIF eight debt service for the lack of increment that exists within those TIF districts. The fiscal impact you can see here and engagement letter was attached, just $14,000 that will come out of TIF number four. So we do have about another five years worth of increment that we can collect in TIF four, which would help with the TIF five and eight debt service. So that's what this resolution is. It's just giving us permission to basically start the process and engage Ellers to go through that. This process is pretty formal, so you're going to hear a lot more about it. You have to go to the joint review board and then everything ultimately comes back to council to approve the final amendment. This is just giving us permission to move forward and engage Ellers to do the work.
Well, I will, I will move for the action to engage Ellers to then TIF four, or to allow for sharing with both TIF five and TIF eight.
Second. I guess, I have a point of question and Mayor, can we actually vote on things in a, a call meeting for a resolution? Or maybe Greg knows?
Yeah, Regina, yes, you can, we can vote on it, but it would be a recommendation to council.
Because this, this is simply a committee and they would have to go to council, full council for final approval.
Right, that's what I thought.
So I will, I'll bend to say, you say that we'll, we'll refer this in a positive way to council.
Okay. Thank you for that amendment. So is there any discussion on this item? Give a chance in case they're muted. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Jamin, for bringing that up.
No problem. Okay, so I do have the same presentation, give or take, that I did last time. I'll go through it pretty quickly. Just to kind of get everybody back up to speed in terms of, you know, basically what we want to accomplish and the kind of two, three, four things that the committee of the whole needs to keep on their mind as we wrap up the rest of the departmental budget presentations. So, whoops, sorry.
And Jamin, before we forget, it looks like Tom Mieske has joined us, just so that's in the records.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we are at October 22nd, obviously, so we have a number of department budgets to go through tonight. I think we can get through them pretty quickly. At the end of the meeting, we'll determine if you feel a third meeting is necessary or not. Like I said, the October 8th meeting was kind of the long one because we, we had the financial management plan and then kind of a long-winded budget overview. So tonight, I think we'll go a little bit quicker. So again, just a couple of things that are driving the budget this year. So right now, we do have a placeholder of 2% wage increase for union and non-union. We did see a 2.5% increase in health insurance premiums. Obviously, the Opera House cancellations and uncertainty were kind of a driving factor in a lot of the discussions internally. And then at the last committee of the whole meeting, which further went on to finance committee for additional discussion last, or a couple of weeks ago. And we'll discuss this a little bit further on the following slides. Obviously, we have some struggling TIF districts, TIF five, six and eight. Levy support is totaling about $150,000 in 2021. That's kind of the whole purpose of the TIF four amendment, to help out a little bit with some of the debt service requirements within those three tips. So it may not cover all of it over the next few years, but it'll certainly make a pretty significant dent in it. So hopefully that, that goes, that process moves along pretty smoothly. We did see net new construction of about 1.8% this year, approximately $135,000 or increase to our base tax levy or basically our, our operating levy, if you will. We will see $130,000 approximately cash inflow from the TIF three termination in '21. I imagine that will probably, we'll probably see that hit the books around August or September in 2021. And then we do have the proposed public works position built into the budget that went through the personnel committee meetings and, and that position was recommended from that committee. Obviously, the, the ongoing pandemic has created a significant amount of uncertainty. So right now, we're budgeting as if it's going to be a normal year. I think we all know that's probably not true. Hopefully, a little bit more normal than 2020, but you know, again, we, we still don't know what's going to happen. So we are looking for a little bit of input in terms of what we put into the contingency amount for right now. Some input on the final wage increase and then obviously depending on how things happen throughout the year, you know, we all have to be prepared to reverse course in 2021 in relation to any decisions that we make. You know, we, as of right now, state aides look like they're going to be there. We don't know what's going to happen in 2022, so there's still a lot of things up in the air that could potentially happen. You know, the thing with city finances is we may not have a good picture until June, July, August in terms of having to make tough decisions. We may not have to make any tough decisions, who knows? But I think we all just have to kind of be prepared for that because this is a weird time. So just want to throw that out there. So just a few open items, pretty similar to what we've had in the past year. So we do want your input on the contingency amount. Right now, I did throw in $100,000 just to kind of be on the safe side because we don't know what's going to happen. Just to give you an idea, for those of you who haven't been involved in the finance committee or anything, we're actually down almost $285,000 in revenues due to COVID. We've had some cost offsets too, so we're, we're, we're going to be okay. But you can see how hardly, how hard we've been impacted by this. So again, we, we kind of increased that actual contingency amount to $100,000. Determine the final wage increase. Again, we have 2% put in right now. AJ can maybe touch on that a little bit later as we're going through her presentation, if she has any input related to that. Again, just to confirm the, the additional staffing request approved by personnel, you know, we'll have the committee of the whole's take on that and then ultimately approval by council at the budget hearing. We are waiting on the final decision on school resource officer. That could have an impact. Right now, we did approach that pretty conservatively and I'm glad we did. We basically cut that revenue in half right now, but we still don't even know if that other half is going to be there. So we're, we're still waiting on some news there. And then the union contract may not be completed by November 10th. That's still in process. So hopefully it is, fingers crossed, but we may have to revisit this depending on how the, the union negotiations turn out. Obviously, the expenditure restraint parameters aren't available yet. We're hoping to see those in the next few days, so we can either bring them back to the final committee of the whole meeting or, or show you where we fall at the, the final council meeting. We did meet with the townships about the fire budget. No major concerns were brought up, so once the expense budget is confirmed, I can finalize that fire billing amount, which has been calculated. We just need to make sure everything is approved and finalized before we actually finalize that revenue piece of it. And obviously, the final statement of assessment from the DOR, which will ultimately determine our mill rate, we may need to play a little bit with some of the debt service funds in terms of pulling from special assessments to kind of smooth out the, the overall impact on the mill rate. So that's where we're at in terms of outstanding information and, and things that the committee of the whole needs to provide their input. So some things that changed from last meeting. I did decrease the public works employee wages and benefits by about $5,700. I just basically assumed a two-one start date for the new employee there. I increased the building maintenance fund transfer to the general fund by $5,000. I think it was a little light to begin with, once I went back and started looking at it. Um, sorry. We did get some revised information on the video services provider contribution from the state by about $1,000. And then at the last meeting, we, it was requested that we bring the Opera House back to the finance committee meeting to discuss further. And we did increase that transfer to the Opera House by about $13,000. So tonight would be the night to discuss that. Additionally, if you'd want to, we can actually do that now, if you'd like, just so everybody's aware that that happened. And then the last change I made was increase the insurance deductible budget by $5,000.
Jamin, can you explain that insurance deductible budget a little bit, what that means?
Yeah, and we'll touch on that a little bit in the detailed department budgets too. But basically, we have a deductible that we budget every single year. We've barely charged anything against it in the last few years. It was increased to $40,000 this year. I think the most we've seen in the last three years, and if you average out the last three years, I think it's been about $9,000. So by reducing this by $5,000, we still have a deductible budgeted of about $35,000. So again, these were kind of changes to not only fit the, the Opera House transfer in, but also to kind of fit in under the expenditure restraint program right now. That number's going to change, which I'll touch on in a little bit. I think we'll be fine where we can probably jump that back up unless we want to budget $5,000 somewhere else. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, it was on mute.
That's right.
Yep, thank you.
All right, one second. I just need to look up something quick. Okay. Again, this information was just kind of provided more for you to look at ahead of time. Not going to go through it in any amount of detail outside of kind of touching on the, the bottom line here. And you can see where we're at in terms of net revenues and expenditures of approximately $3,800. Things could change right now, depending on how the school resource officer comes out. And we do have, you know, some other kind of revenue line items that come in a little bit late as we tweak and adjust, but right now, we're sitting at about $3,800 bottom line. Again, we do have an increased contingency line amount and some other, other line items that we could potentially adjust and move a little bit, depending on how the expenditure restraint shakes out and other revenue items. But right now, we are showing a bottom line of $3,800. Again, we'll get through this pretty quickly, but this was just for your reference to show you the different buckets of revenues and expenditures. You know, the biggest thing obviously with revenue is the 72% relate to taxes, which is levy and the, the payment in lieu of taxes from utilities and the housing authorities. And then on the general fund side, wages, benefits, insurance, things like that make up 50% of our budget. This is just to give you an idea in terms of where we may fall with the mill rate. Again, this will be determined. This will be determined when we get the final statement of assessment. So again, we can, we'll be able to adjust this a little bit. We do have some excess funds sitting in our special assessment budget that can be used to smooth out the debt service. Again, this is just an estimate in terms of where the 2024 forecasted levy's, or mill rate's going to be. Again, we do have some, some excess funds that we can play with that a little bit to kind of tweak that down and continue that downward trajectory. Again, mill rate history, you can see, we're just forecasting right now an average increase to an average homeowner of about 1.09%. Again, that will be finalized at a later date. We should start seeing the, the final statements of assessments being issued by the DOR here in the next couple of days, hopefully. All right, so expenditure restraint, again, right now, we're showing a general fund change of about 2.38%. That's the red, red number down at the bottom. This kind of shows you where we're at in terms of how we're calculating it. Again, this was an adjustment or a number that I was playing with to kind of move some numbers around to kind of fall under. And you can see, we, we basically have a $2,300 window to play with right now. The nice thing with this is I had 1.3 built in for the consumer price index. Looking at the latest one, it may be closer to 1.4, 1.5. So if it is 1.4%, then we'd have about 12,700 to play with to fall under the expenditure restraint. And then if it's at 1.5%, we'd be at about $23,000 to play with. So again, back to your question, Regina, if, if we, if we see 1.4, 1.5 when the final CPI comes out, we can move that deductible back if you wish. Yeah, and this is just kind of for your reference and your information to go back to, if you have any questions or want to kind of see how the buckets are in terms of the revenues. Same things here, just kind of a visual picture of what the different buckets are in terms of revenues and what they've been doing over the last few years, in terms of actual and budget. Yeah, and this kind of shows you just where the general fund operating expense has been trending over the last few years. And then along with the 20 and 21 budgets, this does not include debt service. So this entire budget is just kind of the operating slash direct costs that we have for the general. Here's a non-labor summary for the general fund. Again, just something to refer back to, we're up about 2.1% over the 2020 budget, which is reasonable. This does not include the tax grant. We kind of look at that separately, but this, this has every, all of the department's kind of non-labor costs built in, so you can refer back to that and see what's changed since 2020 in one simple.
The last slide, what is the miscellaneous revenue?
So, yeah, and just kind of labor. Yeah. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was coughing. I said, what is the miscellaneous revenue on the last slide?
Uh, do, 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 up here? Most of that is, well, a big chunk of it's. Yeah, a big chunk of it's interesting. Come on, let me pull it up and tell you exactly what it is. So miscellaneous revenue is made up of a number of different items. The biggest one in this budget is the contribution from the Friends of the Stoughton Youth Center. But then also, we have some donations to the senior center for the kitchen fund from the townships, the special gift foundation. Some of the rental income does go in there. This would include interest income, any donations and things like that.
Okay, I just didn't know if that included grants, but that's under something else?
This would include grants if we knew of any specific ones. Some of those are included also within the intergovernmental. Right now, looking at this. Like really, the only grants we have showing would maybe be the donations for the police department from the Bryant Foundation. But from an operating standpoint, we don't know of a lot of grants that are guaranteed.
Okay.
The senior center cash management, that one, that one shows up in a different line item, not as miscellaneous.
All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep. All right, so we don't need to go through this in any amount of detail. We'll just kind of, this is just again for your reference. You can see what the non-labor increase has been compared to the 2020 budget and what it's done historically. Kind of a breakdown of the general fund wage benefits and insurance for your information. Again, just something you can refer back to prior to us taking the, the budget back to council. Here's just a general fund wage summary. Again, you can see what we've done. Actual 17, 18 and 19, and then the budget increases for 20 and 21. Same thing for benefits. And same thing for health insurance. Health insurance is a little funny because we did see a 2.5% increase in the actual insurance premiums, the actual premium cost, but we saw a lot of different election changes throughout the year compared to the 2020 budget. So we're actually seeing a little bit of a decrease in the total cost for health insurance. And that is it for the overall summary. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I would have a question, Jamin. Is the 23% for debt service in line with other cities our size?
Any idea? That I don't know off the top of my head. I can say just in terms of overall debt burden, we're higher than most cities our size. That's not necessarily a bad thing. We're just a little bit higher. A lot of that has to do with kind of the $8 million public works building borrowing too, which was anticipated. So it's not like, ooh, we've been doing something wrong. We're, we're kind of knocking that ceiling down a little bit in terms of the overall percentage of debt service. I'm not entirely sure. It seems pretty much in line. But our overall debt burden is a little bit higher in total.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Council President Hirsch, since you are chairing the meeting, I'll have you maybe just introduce the individual department budgets and we can go through them one by one. Those are on the.
Yep. Yeah, I have them. I'm sorry, I just had a, my dog was throwing his bone around and it was a little loud. So anyway, our first up is the human resources and risk management, folks. And that's AJ, right?
Yeah, so similar to, to past years, I'll kind of touch on the high level pieces and then the department heads are available to go through them and answer any questions. I'm just going to pull the, the spreadsheet up here. It's a little bit easier to see and move around as opposed to going through the PDF. But Director Gillingham has human resources and risk management, other general government and then insurance. So we'll go through those pretty quickly. Again, I'll, we'll kind of go through these, just kind of touch on the high points. If you have any questions, go ahead and let Council President know and we'll, we'll answer them as best we can. So overall, we saw a labor increase of about 4% within the human resources department this year for 2021. Non-labor, we did see about a 10.3% decrease in non-labor costs compared to the 2020 budget. We were able to kind of eliminate some travel and conference costs and just combine that with the training line. So we were able to decrease that a little bit. And then the overall budget increase was about 2.7%. So here's reasonable. Again, I have included these graphs down here for the individual departments. I don't know if they add any value or not, but you can kind of see what the trends have been between non-labor. And then the blue is obviously the labor costs, which would be wages, benefits, insurance, things like that. Director Gillingham, do you have any input you want to add in onto your budget for this one?
It's very straightforward and it's almost static.
Thank you, AJ. Does anybody else have any questions? Just speak up because I can't really see if you raise your hand unless you put it in the chat. All right, seeing none. Go ahead, Jamin.
Okay. Director Gillingham does have two more, so we'll go through the other general government and insurance pretty quickly. The other general government, this is the one where I talked about the deductible, and that's actually this line here. The line I just kind of shaded here, I'm actually just going to get yellow. So you can see, we still have $35,000 budgeted for a deductible amount, but you can see here in 2018 and 2019, I can actually kind of. And 27 actual, which would be basically these three columns. We've averaged $12,000. You can see in 17, we didn't have anything. 18, we had $5,000 and then 19, we had $20,000. And 19 was anticipated. We knew that was going to happen. So that's why I felt comfortable reducing that deductible from 40 to 35. And then the miscellaneous expenses down here really relate to a loan from the electric utility to pay back the WRS liability. And some of those changes were made, so that budget's been pretty static over the years. And I think there's just a few more years left on that one. So again, you can kind of see where we've been going over the past few years. We'll touch on insurance very quickly. So again, we, we did see a bit of a bump of 3.5%. This one's a little tricky and I'll let kind of Director Gillingham touch on it a little bit. If, if she has any input she wants to put in on it, because again, we've, we've, we've been under budget on this a lot, but we actually did increase the budget for 2021. So Director Gillingham, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that a little bit?
Absolutely. I'm going to go through several.
I'm going to go through several of the lines here, our auto physical damage insurance, that one jumped up about $5,000. Reason being is, we have had a high occurrence of incidents and accidents requiring that there is out-of-pocket payments. We are working on that with the department that has the greatest percentage of accidents and incidents and trying to do a re-education program as well as a driver program. Boiler and machinery, we had just a small increase there. Property insurance, there was a increase there of $10,599. That's due to the City Hall building being our first full year. And then other valuations and claims that we've had throughout the year. Let's take a look here, crime insurance, that went down and that's just based on us not having any claims there. Volunteer Workers' Comp Insurance, that one's also a very small change there. Workers' Comp, this one here went down over $10,000 and the reason being is our employees are working smart and our, what's called a mod rating, which is our of loss, is a very good number right now, we haven't had a lot of injuries. And then the last one being the unemployment compensation, I'm pretty sure that most organizations are going to see an increase there, that's due to unemployment and there's about a $2,000 increase there. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
What is crime insurance?
Crime insurance is for our computer system. So in the event that we have a breach, the crime insurance assists John and we actually have coverage for that. So let's say social security numbers are breached or private health information, there are penalties for that, so we do carry insurance.
It's not gonna. Does the insurance cover in case we get like hacked and what is it, you get ransomed?
Yes, yes, that's, that's why I mentioned John Montgomery's name, there is insurance there that assists him with that.
Okay.
I was wondering, AJ, what vehicles are insured under the auto physical insurance, damage insurance?
All city vehicles.
Including the Police Department?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for AJ? Very none, I didn't know if Ben was trying to give us a Morse code with the lights or something, but apparently not.
You'd have to ask my daughter.
All right. Okay, Jamin, you can go on to the next one.
Okay, so that would be Director Abair and the Public Works Department budgets, he has a number of them, so. Council President Hirsch, how would you like me to go through these? Do you want us to just touch on each one and then circle back for questions or just, how do you want this to go?
I think maybe page by page, because then it might be, you know, do the highway and streets with the graphs and then go on to parks. Just in case somebody has questions, so you don't have to flip back through a number of things.
Sure. All right, so here is the first one, this is just the highway and street maintenance, kind of a general one, true public works, I guess, if you will. I'll touch on the high points and then obviously we'll address any questions and Brett can add anything that he wants to. Kind of interesting for like, like Public Works Department and planning, I'll kind of touch on what the overall kind of payroll impact is for all of their departments and then I'll start going through the individual departments. But overall, for all of Brett's departments, we saw payroll increase about 8%. And that's wages, benefits, insurance, that's obviously due to the new hire that we're proposing. For the Highway and Street Maintenance Department itself, we did see an increase of about 5% in labor wages. Obviously, that's because of a new hire and we did see some changes in benefits elections as well. Non-labor went up 2.7%, which is reasonable. And the total Highway and Street Maintenance Department, departmental budget went up about 4.35%. But again, most of that relates to the wage and benefits increase due to the new hire.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions regarding the Highway and Street Maintenance?
I had one, this is Lisa. I was just curious where we were at on the tree purchases, because it looks like we're quite low, but that's through the end of August. So I'm wondering if there have since been trees purchased planted or is that still in the works for this year?
Hey, Liz, this, this is Brett, actually, trees are being planted this week. So the invoice for those shortly and that will be brought down to virtually zero. The, something increased for next year is actually for tree planting. At the end of this year, our EAB funds will be exhausted, so that program will be over with. It's been very successful, however, the infill planting, we still want to continue that. So we did ask for a little bit more money for tree planting, but, but yes, that, that money will be exhausted, that you see on your screen there.
Thanks, Mike.
Sid?
President, yeah, I have one question or two, are we still selling lumber? Could you just really quickly review that?
Yes, yep, so our tree cycling program is still live and well. So we do have a, I would say, a cache of lumber. With COVID, we've elected not to do the auction, but we do have them, wood available that's kiln-dried. And we'll see how it goes next year, but we'll have another auction next year, because that was also a successful program.
And where does that money go, Brett?
That, that goes back into the Tree Commission Fund, which actually goes to purchase more trees. I know we had touched on a grant program, so those dollars would go to help match those grant dollars from the DNR. So it goes back into a fund for tree-related items.
It's not a lot of money, but it's, it offsets a little bit of cost, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, I think we generated, it was a couple thousand last year, so it's, it's something. And it definitely goes back into our urban forest.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions?
The overtime generally goes toward snow removal, I guess?
Yeah, I would say it's mostly a story mobile and as you guys can imagine, it's, it ebbs and flows, it really depends on the season. During the summer months, you know, if we have any, any storms, you know, a lot of tree removal type stuff. But typically, it's the majority of it is yes, no.
I have a question, Brett and I guess Jamin too, for all these, you know, you have a broken down between salaries and wages. Are the salaries just the, the directors and the wages are all the other employees or how is that broken down between salaries and your hourly people? I mean.
I believe that, I believe that is the truth, yes.
That is correct.
Just the directors are the salaries, I'm just trying to see if there's anybody else up on there, okay.
And just one more question if I could, and that is, what will the new person being, what will the new person do? What are you, what's your plans for that person?
Sure, so they're, they're a parks operator. So essentially, in years past, we, we have one full-time parks person being the parks maintenance supervisor. And this new position will be an actual CDL carrying operator. For example, this last year, we did quite a bit of in-house work. Lowell Park and Norris Park, which helps to save the city quite a bit of money to do that in-house. And so to have those types of employees to operate equipment is critical for our parks staff. We were borrowing from the street staff, which is not sustainable. So to have an operator to actually carry a CDL and to operate equipment is important. Also to assist Pat during the winter months, that's when we get a lot of our work done actually in preparation for spring. This position will also be involved with snow plowing, which we are short in that arena. So this, this position's been asked for for quite some time and we're thankful that we're, it was approved as, as of now.
And, and I just, I just have a comment, I just, I asked the question because this is the, one of the, one of the only additional staff we're having come on, I understand, for the city for this upcoming year, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Thank you.
Which is great, Brett, because I know you've been asking for a long time and I know we tried to finagle things last year. So I'm pleased that Personnel Committee is, has cited for your position this year, that's really good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Well, just a comment sort of related, I have been to, fortunately, I walked to both of these trailheads, but Amundson and Cooper's Causeway, where the little parking lots are. The last three weekends, there have been absolutely no parking spaces. So I can tell you, people are absolutely out using the, at least along the Yahara River Trail. So it's, I, you know, I was, felt really good about that and I'm sure that, you know, this position is going to be well utilized and kept busy.
Definitely, and it's also keeping up with our service level, you know, we have a high service level and we need to keep it there. There's a lot of expectations there, so this, this position will definitely help with, with that as we continue to, to progress the park system.
Right, especially seeing so, we have, you know, Norica Ridge, which has a new park that will be established and KPW will have a new park. And if DeBorick, you know, adds more parks out on Highway 51, that's a lot more trails as well. So we definitely need this position.
Right, and I will add to that, we are in negotiations with the state for connecting highway funds, which will go to offset some of the cost of disposition as well.
Excellent. Any other questions? Seen none, Jamin, I give it back to you.
Okay, so here's the parks budget. Obviously, as we just discussed, we did see labor costs go up about 27% to the new hire, but we did see non-labor costs decrease just slightly, about 0.65% for total increase of 18.56%. So pretty straightforward, even if you look at the graph, you can see non-labor costs in the orange here have been pretty static over the years. We do see the bump in blue here, which is obviously due to the new employee.
Any questions for the parks part of Public Works? I see none, okay, Jamin.
Snow removal, no change.
It's not going to snow this year either, so we're, we're good.
That kind of snow, oh, thank God.
All the snow moved up north. Exactly, you can have it.
I was just talking to somebody from Bayfield this morning and they got six inches or more and he said the roads are icy and slippery. He said, it's all yours.
I'll just tell you that we do get our sold-out-to-state contract and, and that did go up slightly, but we're still in, in good shape with, for the season.
Okay, great. So I guess we can move on?
And signs and markings, no change.
Any questions?
Will any of this go up with having the additional yellow paintings on, on curbsides, is that included in with this one?
The additional yellow paintings as far as.
In the recent, like in the recently designated areas?
Oh, we do that every year already. And we have added slightly to that, but the, the cost for that really is, is minimal. We've also, with the DOT project on West Main, that's an epoxy paint, which should last probably five years or so. So we're really in pretty good shape with, with this budget.
Okay.
Great, any other questions? All right, we can go on to street lighting.
Street lighting, we were able to reduce just slightly, again, kind of putting it more in line with historical trends. And obviously, some of the lighting changes with the LED switch over and things like that.
Right, I just wanted to highlight some of the changes for downtown and, and next year it could down even further, we're, we're going to watch it. But the LED upgrades we made downtown are, are definitely going to help to offset some of the cost reductions here.
Great, I was, I was wondering how, it'll be interesting to see for next year how much that actually has changed.
Yep.
Somebody else have any questions? Comments? All right.
I do have one question, Regina, if that's okay, and that is, I don't know if we're going to get to, I don't know if we're going to get to this, but I, I get, I get a fair number of people every year asking me about flowers on Main Street, whether or not we'll ever sort of do that again. I know it was, I know I took a portion of the budget, but I think with all the, the cha, you know, the talk of, and, and the action actually on, on the uptown. That I think that there, I think there is a time at some point that we should be talking about a more generous use of flowers on Main Street. And it doesn't have anything to do with street lighting, I'm not sure if we're going to do that, but I, I would really like to see us as a group get behind or support that or try to get, get some private group to help us with that project. I think it would really benefit our city, I really miss it, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, I think maybe that's something that Public Works can kind of do a cost analysis, you know, of how much time spent, because most annual flowers need to be watered every day, so it'd have to be a pretty big, you know, time commitment, and I don't know what, you know, Brett's thinking about that or.
Yeah, I think we can definitely bring that back to the, the committee, I know we've talked about this in the past. I, I see this as a collaboration between us and a, and a group, whoever that group is, I don't know at this point, but we can certainly revisit that, that topic.
Okay.
Just so you know, Sid, we're also looking at our ordinances to see if we can allow property owners to put their own out there, which some of them have done during COVID.
Sorry, I admitted myself and got myself off screen. You know, I, I don't know why it was discontinued. I was, I was here, not on council when there were flowers and, and I think it, I think there was some controversy at that point, because we, we were really careful about the time, you know, spent by Public Works to do that. There are some cities that do have sort of automatic watering systems and I know those are expensive, but I think with their, with the whole effort to rejuvenate the downtown and make it look beautiful, flowers are, are pretty darn important.
I can have a conversation with the chamber as well and see if we can work through them to, to create some sort of a, a program. But, but like Regina said, you know, with, with annual flowers, they, they do take quite a bit of maintenance and we, we don't want to let those, those go. So to have a good plan in place, I think is, is important.
Yeah, they, they take a lot of care and especially on those hot days. You might actually have to be watered a couple of times depending on how deep the, the flower container is, but yeah. It is, it's just a cost and we'll have to look at it and, you know, I don't know if all storefronts have access to hoses or whatever that they could help out. I don't know, that's something to be discussed at Public Works. In a committee meeting, so, but we do need to move on, so I think the next thing is the semi. In a committee meeting, so, but we do need to move on. So I think the next thing is the cemetery. Jamin?
We did not see any change in the cemetery budget this year.
We, we did negotiate a contract with Homacher this last year and our expenses have been stagnant with them. So we're, we're in really good shape. Actually, the, the cost to maintain the cemetery is less than it was in 2009. So we're, we're really pleased with where we're at with, with that.
Wow, that's great. All right, we can continue on to recreation.
So we'll go through recreation and then youth center director Glenn. No major changes here. We did see a labor increase in the rec department of about 1.09%, and then a non- about 3.67%, nothing really material between the light items that I could see for a total budget change of about 1.91%.
And that change was because we approved last and last budget for that part-time worker, correct?
That did shift a little bit in terms of what we had budgeted last year versus knowing what we know now with that position. And then we did kind of shuffle around the elections between, or not elections, allocations between recre, or director, between recreation and, and the youth center.
Okay. Somebody have any questions regarding the recreation? I don't see anything, so can, can continue, Jamin.
So here is the youth center and this is where you kind of see the bigger jump in labor and wages. Labor and wages, or labor and benefits actually went up 2.16%, so we're pretty close to the 2% overall for the, the department as a whole. Non-labor did not change at all, stayed static for a total increase in the budget of about 1.95%.
Somebody have any questions regarding the youth center at all?
I have a couple. Are they doing any programming now?
Lisa, there, we have a tutoring, actually two tutoring programs that are going on right now. One's a virtual tutoring program where Greg coordinated between the school district and Cummins volunteers, and there's 19 children that are participating twice a week for our per, and 10 Cummins volunteers that are helping out with that program. And then there's a Spanish-speaking tutoring program that takes place twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays for two hours. And I believe there's 10 children that are participating in that. Then also there, Greg continues to do like mentoring, but there's no, there's no quote-unquote regular after-school recreation type thing where the children are using like the, the gym and, you know, the games and things like that.
That's kind of what I was thinking, thank you. And Jamin, I, can you remind me, I, I feel like I've probably asked this before, but the, so there's a fund transfer. Is the 167 the city portion, or do we get some of that back in that miscellaneous revenue? Could you remind me about that, please?
Yeah, so the Friends of the Youth Center cover certain portions of, I can't remember all, I don't know exactly what it is, but I think it's the director's wages over there and benefits and things like that. So that does come through on the revenue side, but we also show the, the expenses gross in the department as well. So that's what that covers.
So the 167, we are, our commitment is actually less than that then?
Yeah, I think we had about $116,000 total for revenue from the Friends of the Youth Center.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, thanks.
Somebody else have any questions? So you're saying on this budget, the 167 doesn't come out of our budget, only a portion of that?
That's correct. If you were, if you were to net the revenue and the expenses, it'd be less than the 167, but we do show gross in the revenue part of the income statement and then expenses gross in the expenditure side of things.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions regarding recreation or youth center? Seeing and hearing none, we can move on to inspection.
Okay, so the next few budgets will fall under the planning department. It'll be three in total, so inspection, city buildings, and then obviously planning. Inspection, you can see here, labor, we did decrease about 11.86%. Again, that was just simply to put the allocations in line with the historical numbers. You can see here, working your way across. We've been seeing allocations kind of in the mid 60s and our budgets were just off in term, terms of allocations. Planning department overall was okay, it was just the way we're, we were kind of allocating them between the three departments within the, the planning department. Non-labor costs stayed static, did not change at all, so we saw a total decrease of about 11.5% in the inspection budget.
And I do have a question on this one Regina, if that's okay. Yeah, so we have the, the Kettle Park West three. When we're, when we're gonna expect to have at least in the next couple of years, a steady increase of building on that site for our residential part of it, for sure. And will, will that, will each one of these, and, you know, units be inspected by our city staff? Is that required then? And will that result in a fairly major increase over the next couple of years? Is that anticipated? Because I think new buildings do have to be inspected, correct?
Multiple times, and all of those inspections for the new houses are completed by in-house staff. And we, we certainly are positioned to handle the new houses that are being, that will be constructed in Kettle Park West with the current staffing that we have. Right now, you, you recognize that we've been able to accommodate the housing construction going on in Nordic Ridge with, with in-house staff as well. So really don't envision a large surplus of lots coming online all at once, or the market to, to accommodate that differently. If that changes in a few years, we'll have to look at that to accommodate potential changes if necessary then.
Okay, I rea, I raise it because you know that, you know, the, the increased business is gonna result in an increased work by our department potentially, so I'm, I'm just looking forward to that, so. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for Rodney or Jamin? All right, hearing none, we can move on to city buildings.
City buildings, we did see a decrease in, in labor wages, benefits, insurance of about 11%. Again, that's due to the actual custodian benefits elections at this point. We, we did budget whole family benefits and that's not the election that was ultimately taken. And then we did put the allocations more in line with historical, so you can see where we didn't budget any, any salaries amounts because seen them in the actual activity itself. So that's the reason for the decrease in labor and benefits there. Non-labor, we did about 9%. Again, we have a better handle on what the actual utilities are for the, the, the new city hall. So we were able to decrease that slightly as well. So we did see a total decrease in the city buildings budget of about 10%.
Excellent, it's always good to hear that. Somebody have any questions regarding our city buildings?
I do.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to know, you know, we saved $10,000 and we have a city hall landscaping, it looks like it belonged throughout the country, because, tell you the truth, and I'll be real blunt, it looked like crap. The plantings were, were sad. The, they weren't getting, or if they were, was basically was, was weeds at one time covering the city sign. You need to get, you need to get your act together on this, start, and start maintaining in, in presenting this community as a professional organization, because what was out there this, this year was incredibly disappointing.
We agree, Tom. We're having difficulty getting vendors in there, expound on that.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually proceeded and, and we'll have our contractor in here that, this, the end of this month, first part of November to begin appropriate plantings for the fall. You'll recall, we had a CIP allocation for each of the city buildings, public, or not Public Works, city hall, public safety building, the senior center for landscaping updates. So that'll take place, yep, this fall or in the early part of spring next year. So we agree.
And that's great, I appreciate that, to hear that. However, I also would like to see and make sure that we do have staff around to maintain that new planting. That's, that's the tricky part.
Well, certainly trying to do lower maintenance type plantings, but yes, we, we need to encourage that. And once we get it established properly, it'll be more easily maintained as well. We've been working with the rec, or Parks, Parks folks and Brett's office to try to manage that going forward, once the improvements are made.
So we've mentioned this several times in committees, what it would take to bring the city's electric usage to 100% renewable. Last estimate I heard was about $10,000. And I think it's worth serious consideration, trying to fit that in here this year. I think, you know, we, we voted about a year ago, 10 to 1, saying that crisis is an emergency and we should treat it as such. I know the, the mayor mentioned in the, the previous budget meeting that we might have some expenditures related to Stoughton's 175th anniversary. I would see this as an investment in 175 more years.
Thank you Ben for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think that's, it's a good point. I'll just make a couple of comments. Those would more likely be CIP-related budget items. We did do the study last year with the grant that we received, and I did get notice this week that there's another grant opportunity that we'll probably be part of. I'm not sure what that's, the scope of that's gonna be yet, but certainly, you know, we're looking at ways to, you know, to implement our findings and to address that issue. I think it's gonna be, I think it'll be kind of a marathon process. We won't be able to do everything at once, but certainly as we make decisions on upgrading our buildings, that would, you know, be, be some consideration. I don't know if you have anything to add Rodney or Jill?
Well, I think what Ben is saying is, and Jill can chime in, it's, it's not only updating our buildings, but also being part of choose, if I remember it, the choose renewable program that we're getting 100% renewable energy coming into our city. Is that what you're talking about Ben? And, and what you remember Jill?
That's right.
I think the one thing that I would, I guess, recommend is, right now we're working through our choose renewable program. River Falls, through WPPI has actually submitted for a change in the tariff, to be able to actually reduce the choose renewable, the energy blocks to a third of the cost they are today. So there's an opportunity, once that actually gets approved, which we anticipate happening, then we would file a similar tariff and so the opportunity then would be available to all of our customers. So there's kind of from a cost standpoint right now, there's an opportunity, I think, very, in the very near future, depending on how quickly PSC is able to respond to that tariff request, to be able to reduce those costs.
And that would be our annual cost. So it, if I remember right, it shouldn't, it would not go into a capital improvement budget. It would actually be an annual budget item.
It would be. Sorry, I, I think from a, you know, purchasing those energy blocks annually, it would be an annual budget item.
Excuse me, could I ask a question Ben? You mentioned a $10 amount would be required. What would that be utilized for? I, I'm pretty unfamiliar, sorry.
That, that would go toward buying renewable energy credits to ensure that the amount of energy we are using is backed by renewable, renewable energy generation somewhere. It's not necessarily that we're getting directly that power from renewable, but it's, you know, funding a renewable project somewhere.
Okay.
And, and Jill, maybe you can explain this better, but what happens is WPPI buys energy from a number of different places, like wind and solar and coal and natural gas. We ask for this, these credits, we buy these credits, we guarantee that our energy supposedly is coming from the renewable parts, like the wind and the, the solar farms. And what that does, if more communities do that, it makes WPPI actually invest in more renewable solar farms, wind farms, et cetera. So you're boosting up the renewable energy that's available out there in the world and we're actually benefiting from that renewable energy. Does that make sense Jill?
Yep, Regina, that's spot on. And I just went back and looked at that $10,000 price that we had, I think, got from WPPI as far as an estimate on what they thought that would cost. That is after that tariff work is done. So right now, again, that, that tariff at least has been submitted by one of our member communities, which was River Falls. I don't know, I know the PSC is working quite slow these days because they are kind of very engaged in, in their COVID response. But once that passes, which we expect it to pass, then that kind of opens things up. And so it's much easier then for other communities to apply for that. So soon as that does happen, we will apply for that. But right now, that $10,000 cost, I think, is, you know, then, and it's in a realistic number at this point in time. It will be though, once that tariff is able to be approved by the people.
And so just to make everybody aware too, if I remember right from our conversation, if we choose a renewable, which is an extra $10,000, we cannot pass that extra cost onto our community, right? It doesn't come out of their electric bill, it comes out of our budget, right?
The $10,000 would be for taking on, say, making all of the city buildings 100% renewable, so that your, you know, your energy actually provided to those buildings would be from a renewable energy source, would not be impactful to, say, any of the other customers. It would just be basically as the city of Stoughton making the commitment to having their energy coming from renewable resources.
So I hear that, Ben, you wanted to put like a motion or amendment to the budget to potentially add $10,000 for the choose renewable program for our city buildings?
I, I think that's still prudent. I, I think we might not necessarily move on it until we can get that, can get that rate going through. But I think if we do get that lower rate tariff, that we should move on it. So I will continue, I will make that motion.
Okay. Second? If not a-
Could we, could I hear the wording on that again Ben? Could we, could I hear the wording on that again, Ben?
Ben, you're muted.
Sorry. To add $10,000, I guess it would be spread between city buildings and street lighting. To let me think about how, how to exactly word this. To bring the city's electrical usage to 100% renewable energy, or as near as that amount will allow. To be to be used in case of a rate tariff reduction for renewables.
So, so I, I have a question after Ben is finished.
Then we got this motion on the floor. Let's, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, Phil's second. All right, now we can open it up for discussion.
I do have a question.
Sure.
And that is, that is going back to my original motion that I had earlier. We talked about this, this, an action item being simply a recommendation for rather than being done in a, in a committee of the whole. So I'm, I'm not sure that this is proper.
It actually has gone to committee. I mean, CACP and utilities have brought this up in both of their agendas previously. It just wasn't.
I'm just saying, Regina, we, we weren't able to act on, weren't able to act on my original motion at the beginning of this meeting. And now, how are we acting on a motion? This, this, if I could, Regina, what this would be doing is, is adding it to the budget. And it would be voted on by the full council. So basically, it's, it's, it's what it was with your suggestion, Sid. It's a recommendation to council.
Right. And Sid, you didn't have a, a price to it. That's, that's the thing that we were talking about. You didn't for your downtown flowers, we, you needed to.
That wasn't, no, that wasn't, no, that, that wasn't it. When we started this meeting, I made a motion and we, and Greg is right, we discussed the fact that because it's a cow, we only do this as a recommendation to the council, rather than having this voted on tonight, because we talked about it being a recommendation for council, that we have that vote at a council meeting.
Right, right. Sid, all we're doing is putting it in there that it's recommended to full council for us to approve at later time. We're just seeing if it gets to that first step.
Well, what this, what this would do, Regina, is that it would, it would change the budget. It would take $10,000 from somewhere. And bring that $10,000 for this purpose, for this renewable power's purpose. So what that would do is if we passed this, it would, it would change the budget contingent on the council passing it as.
Exactly.
I think we need to understand where, where the money's coming from. He said, is it an even amount for each building? Because each each building basically has its own budget.
Well, how does electricity be? I mean, that's, Jill, maybe we're looking at you for some guidance on that.
I think Jamin would be able to tell us where that line item is, but I believe it's probably in each, like, I would assume any, I guess, Jamin, that would probably be a question for you. I should, as far as where that, those dollars come from, as far as the line item is for each building's electrical use.
And it's my, it's my intention to abstain from this one for sure, because I'm not sure that we're clear enough on it. So I will be abstaining.
Okay. Jamin, can you address what Jill was talking about?
So a fair number of them are budgeted within the city buildings department or obviously the street lighting. I believe we'd have to look at the separate buildings, like AMs, utilities, obviously. I believe fire budgets, theirs within their own departments. So there's a couple of line departments that don't fall within these. I'd have to do a kind of a deeper dive to see where all those fall. I believe public line item. So there's, there's a fair number of them that I'd have to do a little digging.
Like U Center and, okay.
The senior center, the fire department, the public works building, please, all of those have utility lines within their funds, the library. So there certainly are accounts separately. I, I would just pose the question, not knowing the, the timing of when the rate change could occur. If it occurs at some point later in 2021, i- if it's about a $10,000, you know, adjustment, would that be an appropriate time to consider use of contingency, you know, in 2021? As opposed to allocating funds for it right now within, and taking the $10,000 from some other place? But it might not become a rate effective until late next year.
Yeah, and, and due to the confusion on this, I would move to table.
Can I move in, or is the motion to table?
Well, you would have to second if it, if anybody seconds the table, then we just.
I will second it.
Who was that? Tom? Ozzy, second?
Yes.
And then we have to vote on tabling this measure. So then it doesn't ever get to full council, if I'm correct.
There's no debate on a table.
No debate on table.
But it has to be voted on to table it.
It has to be voted on, correct.
All right, so there's a lot of background noise right now, but for all the council members, if say aye if you table it, or nay if you want to continue discussion. So all in favor, say aye to table?
Aye.
Aye.
That was three? To not tables, say nay?
Nay.
Nay. I think that was a little bit more, so the nays have it, so we can continue.
I could have to take a roll call on that one.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
All right. I don't have the list in front of me, but Sid.
Hi.
Uh, I'm just gonna look who's in the pictures. Fred?
I would say aye.
Uh, Ozzy?
Aye.
Bill?
Nay.
Uh, Joyce?
Nay.
Tom?
Nay.
Uh, Ben?
Nay.
Looking, I say nay? Trying to find you guys. Greg?
No.
Brett?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
Seven nos and four, four or five yays. So we can continue to discuss this.
I would tend to agree with Rodney that I think I'm very much in favor of this plan. But it seems like there might be a bit of work to do yet on it and some homework. So, given that, I think there's a lot of interest. You know, maybe we need to revisit it when we have all the information and then use money from contingency. That's sort of where I'm headed.
And I would agree with Lisa. I think that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. I think this is a good idea. I'd like to take a good look at it. But it, it needs some in-depth committee work on it before it comes to, comes to us and council. And, and I would agree that for that amount of money, we can, we could probably go to contingency for it. But to, to do it now, to add it to, to the budget without really knowing where it's gonna be coming from, or, or having to, to to look for places for it to come from, I'm, I'm just, I'm just not gonna vote for that.
That was also my intent in voting aye to table on that. I think that we could, we could do a little bit more digging on it with finance to find that, the money to do things like that.
Okay. I like your brainstorming here, Ben?
Yeah, I'm all right with planning to take this out of contingency should the opportunity arise.
Excellent. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
I'm totally in favor of going with it, but I just think we need to do it a lot more in depth. I'm certainly not against solar. I put solar in my house just recently, so I'm, I'm all in favor of that. But I just think we need a lot more discussion and find out where the money's gonna come from.
Okay, it's all good.
I'm in agreement with, with the concern over where the money comes from. And it occurred to me that earlier, when we were talking about the savings from the LED lighting. If, if that were a sizable amount, could it be taken out of there as just a suggestion?
Excellent. Perfect.
Thank you. Reinvesting the, the energy renewable money.
I like that. That's a great thought, Fred.
Thank you.
Any other ideas?
I just would like to say that I think it's important to keep this rolling because we, we certainly want to keep it a priority. So I think it's worth some extra work.
Yeah, I think it's, it's back on the agenda for, I know it was on utilities and probably will be again on CACP, so. And then we'll probably send it off to finance for Brett and Jamin and Lisa to massage the budget to figure it out, once we get the numbers. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Good for me.
All right. With that, Jamin and Rodney, is there anything else you'd like to talk about on this budget, this page?
I have a, I have a point of order. I think we have a, we have a second and a, we have a motion and a second. I think we've got to vote on this.
Yeah, that, that was my question.
Okay, good point, good point. Right, so we went through, I got all discombobulated, my computer died, and then we had so many motions in between there. So, I guess the motion, I don't know if we need to continue to go we want to amend the motion, Ben, at all, to take it back to committee and use contingency, or how do you want to? Because right now, the motion is to have that $10,000 spent in the city budget. Do we want to keep that, or are we, we want to vote on that the way it's written? Or do we want to amend it to go with what we were kind of just coming up with?
I'm okay if we vote it down and just bring it up to council as, later on.
Okay. So.
Ben, Ben, a suggestion is that you could just withdraw the motion and, and then we could just direct staff to revisit it at committee level.
I will follow that suggestion.
Okay. And whoever was the second, do they have to agree to that too?
Yes.
No, they don't have to withdraw motion for a second.
Okay.
Not that I know of. Not according to Robert's rules.
All right. And we don't have to vote on that at all, so.
Phil actually seconded that one.
Yeah. I don't know if that's right. And I, and I agree to withdraw regardless of Robert's rules, so.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I'm learning this too. That's why we have Greg here. He knows so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Thanks again for, Ben, for bringing that forward. Okay, so back to the city buildings. Is there any other things you'd like to discuss, change? Rodney or Jamin's brain about? Joyce, did you have something, or?
No, I'm, I, I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right, we can move on then to planning.
Okay, so planning, I know it seems a while ago, but we saw some significant decreases in wages and benefits on the inspection of city buildings. So obviously, we saw a significant jump in planning, just to put things more in line with historical numbers and the way the payroll system is actually allocated. Did see a jump of about 17, 17.38%. But again, that falls in line with the increases in the other two departments. Nonlabor increase, excuse me, of about nine and a half percent. But again, the scheme of the nonlabor budget for the planning department, that's a total of $2,700. So big percentage, small dollar amounts. For a total increase of about 16.49%. Again, the majority of that, the, the large majority of that was related to the allocation of wages and benefits. But overall, for a planning department, for all three departments, we actually only saw a total labor benefits change of about 1.1%. So again, no, no real significant changes for these departments overall, even though we saw some jumps in between.
Okay, great. Somebody have any questions on the rest of the planning for either Rodney or Jamin? Hearing none, we can move forward onto fire protection.
Okay, fire. So fire, we actually saw a decrease of about, in labor and benefits of about 2.76%. And we saw some shifts in replacement wages and a change in benefits elections as well. Nonlabor costs, we did see a fairly large jump of about 23%. So we did see increases in the training budget, the equipment maintenance budget, DANCAD, subscription and dues, and then the uniform allowance. But overall, a total budget increase of about 1.55%.
Anybody have any questions?
I just had a question on the subscription and dues that it looks like from a percentage standpoint, that's pretty high. Just was curious, are there's, if there's out or?
Yes, so the subscription and dues includes a software upgrade that we're gonna be doing here this year. One of the big participants to that is our Firehouse software that we report to the federal government called NIFR. Is gonna be end of life to you soon. And the new software has a little bit higher cost to it. In addition, there's some costs to the CAD. Out of the CAD and, and some other software that we're, we're taking on that's, that's in that particular line.
Thank you.
Now, are those, Josh, are those gonna be a continual costs? Through now, I mean, are the software costs gonna, that amount's gonna be continuous going forward?
As of right now, that's what it looks like, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we can move on to the library fund.
Okay, so I'll just touch on the high points. But Library Director Ramsey is here to fill in some of the blanks too, because they do have a little bit of a different budget than kind of the general fund departments that we're used to. So the first section I'll go through is the top section, the revenues. Just want to note, this does reflect fine free. And you'll see that in this line here, you'll see the decrease from $21,000 to $7,000. But overall, the city But overall, the city transfer only went up about one and a half percent or about $9,300. So it went from 623 to 632. Touch very quickly on the expenditures and then you guys can discuss it. So labor benefits, we saw an increase of about 2.37%. The majority of that relates to benefits election changes. Nonlabor increased about 1.36%, so nothing too significant there. Total budget overall increased about 2.16%.
Somebody have any questions? Fred, did you have a question?
No, no, sorry.
Yeah, Jamin, obviously, as always, hit all the high points. The only other thing I'll mention is we did have two small personnel requests that were were not recommended to for adoption by the Personnel Committee. One of those was was one that would that the Library Board would like to if they had their druthers, would like to include in the the 2021 budget. It would fit in the budget without having any additional without requiring any additional transfer from the General Fund. The cost is probably about $1,900. I just thought I just wanted to mention that. The other personnel cost, the the other request that we had for the circulation supervisor was about $13,000. And I mean, the Library Board understands, you know, the uncertainty of the pandemic and the reasoning of the Personnel Committee. The some of the the increases in our our operating budget for materials purchases for for books and for audiovisual materials, those those decreases would be, I'm sorry, those increases would be reduced in a scenario where where we were able to to add hours to our administrative assistant position, which was the smaller of the two personnel requests. So this, I just wanted to mention that the the Library Board was was looking to, if at all possible, fit that in. But they they're not going to move in a direction contrary to to what the Personnel Committee recommends.
I would like to say something, please.
Sure.
That did come through the Personnel Committee, and there was a solid reason as to why the Personnel Committee did not want that to go through. First of all, we said we weren't going to talk about personnel matters during these meetings. It was to be handled by the Personnel Committee. And they would make the recommendation going forward for what would come to you as the committee of the whole. The position that Jim's talking about, we will be adding additional, the person would begin to qualify for vacation time and additional benefit information or benefits also. So we had said that we weren't going to bring that to the committee of the whole. The Personnel Committee did their review of it and determined that it was not something that we felt we needed to move forward with. The other piece of that, the reason that they didn't want to move forward was Jim had been tasked to work with finance to look to see if there's anything that we could do in regards to redundancies. And Jim's going to do that here. But we think that there's possibly some ways that we can create efficiencies and not have to add additional hours to an employee. Or we're really not vetting out anything additional other than she's getting more vacation time. So that's just my my words.
And 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 I would add to that for AJ. And it was, we had a long discussion about this and it was unanimous that we not we not do the additional funding. Yeah, so so I'm just reporting as part of that Personnel Committee and a and a long, serious discussion about it.
Yep. And I the only reason I mention it is because at the last committee of the whole meeting, when the departments presented and discussed their budgets, I believe all of them at least mentioned or touched on the personnel requests that they had, not to rehash them or reconsider them, but just as a as a way of reviewing their budget. So that was my intent, not to to relitigate. Relitigate that. You know, the Library Board does by state statute has authority over to to set compensation and and wages and salaries for library staff. That's not something, as I said, that the board is is interested in, that is not a prerogative that they're interested in exercising at this point. But I I just I mention it because the increases that we that we have budgeted for our materials budget, some of those, the board would rather see those go towards personnel. But that in that that is aligned, books and audiovisual. So again, my intent is not to relitigate it or rehash it, but just to mention is that that is something that the board has the Library Board has discussed.
Thank you, Jim. And I do appreciate that, you know. You know, for people being new on this budget stuff, it is it is nice to know what each department requested and what was kind of whittled down to get us in aligned with what the budget is. So I do appreciate, you know, making us aware. But, you know, as AJ said, that the council had decided last year to make all personnel decision go to the Personnel Committee. So it's not a during these budget times. It ended up being more of a popularity contest than a true the true vetting of what was really needed. So I appreciate that. And hopefully, we can find what you need at some point in the future.
Regina? This is Sid again, and I I do this every year, but for the new people on council, Jim, could you just there's a special way that libraries are funded in our in our in our city. And so they are they're they're funded in a certain way so that we're we we're not charged in another way. So Jim, could you really briefly explain that? Because I'm not sure that the new people on council know how the Library Board is funded.
Sure. So what what Sid, what Sid's referring to is the the minimum appropriation, which is set by Dane County Library Service, which has the the authority to to set a minimum appropriation that each municipality in Dane County has to meet. So it's a it's a dollar amount, and it's based on the equalized value of property in that municipality. And so I I talked about this, I think, at a council meeting in September, when there is a resolution that the city councils, all cities who support libraries have to pass every year, saying that they are going to appropriate that amount to their library. And doing that allows them to be exempt from the county library tax. That's what Sid's referring to in terms of, you know, if you don't, if if the municipality doesn't fund its library to to the tune of whatever the minimum is set by equalized property, then that municipality is subject to the county library tax, which is, you know, nothing else but the the minimum appropriation. So it's just a way that counties have of ensuring that all municipalities are funding their libraries to a, you know, a reasonable and sufficient degree. So the way that the library is funded, just briefly here, is about a quarter of our budget comes from county funding, service fees from Dane County, and these are fees paid by the county to our library based on the usage of the library by people in our municipality, but also in other municipalities, especially those that do not have libraries themselves. So people who live in the outlying areas and use our library. And this is all calculated because we know in everybody's library record, you know, where they live, what census tract they reside in. So about a quarter of our funding comes from that. About two thirds to three quarters of our funding comes from the city, which is the transfer in from the General Fund that Jamin described. The rest of it, there's a small amount of reimbursement that comes across county lines from adjacent counties. Again, this is for services provided to residents in other counties. For us, it's mostly Rock County. But it's all of the five, five or six adjacent counties pay us a little bit of money. And then very, very small amount is from fines and fees, things like that. So that's the kind of very quick description of how the library is funded.
Yeah, and Jim, I I raised that because it's, you know, it took me a while to figure that out when I first got on council. And so if I would encourage that if people have a question about how about funding that call Jim again, and he'll 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 explain it again. It took me a couple of years for me to figure it out.
Yeah, and and chapter forty-three of the Wisconsin State Statutes lays out in in pretty great detail how how libraries are to be funded and the relationship between the library and their municipalities and the authorities that the authority that the Library Board has in terms of expenditures and in terms of setting compensation for their for library staff. So that that's all it's it's all spelled out in state statutes, chapter forty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That's great. Any other questions on the library fund? Hearing none, we can move on, Jamin.
Okay, next up is EMS. So things in order here. Okay, so EMS, similar to library, we'll touch on the revenues very quickly. And Lisa can jump in because she understands this a lot more than I do. One thing I just want to point out on the revenues, I guess backtrack a little bit in terms of where we're at in 2020, they've been extremely busy. I think the revenues are going to blow things out of the water this year. Slight increase in the ambulance fees and things like that for next year. Lisa doesn't think they're going to be quite as busy, but who knows? We may be just a little bit under budgeted on the revenue side, which is a good thing. But, you know, better safe than sorry on that side of things. The other piece I want to point out in the revenues is the transfer in from the General Fund. You can see historically, we've been running eighty-eighty. We did twenty-five in 2020. And in 2021, you can see it's down to zero, mainly because they paid off their debt services here. So yeah, good news. So that's one of the biggest changes within the EMS revenues for 2021. In terms of costs, we did see a labor increase of about 4.86%, but again, that just really has to do with this wages part timeline. It wasn't an increase in rates. It's just an increase in the buckets of dollars just due to how busy they've been this year. So again, it it's not a major impact, but that's the biggest reason that we're seeing an increase there this year of the 4.86%. But again, it wasn't wasn't a wage increase. It was just a bucket of dollar increase type thing. Nonlabor, we did see a decrease of about eleven eleven percent. Again, that's mainly due to the debt payments getting themselves off. And I'll just kind of point to some of the line items down here where you see the change. You can see the debt service and equipment replacement down here. And then you can see the shift in 2021. So we got rid of the debt service payment. We were able to increase the transfer over to the equipment replacement, which is their their EMS's own sinking fund for equipment. So that's the biggest shift. Again, you can see we're budgeting a bottom line of $23,000 expenditure budget decrease of approximately 3.9%.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa or Jamin on this? I guess I had one question for you, Lisa. Is there, Jamin, how has COVID affected your expenses with respect to supplies and and equipment and personnel?
Um, we have had an increase in expenditures due to supplies. Fortunately, we also received some CARES funding to help help offset that. So bottom line, at the end of the day, it has not eaten into our normal operating supplies budget that was approved last year. Um. We, I I can't even tell you in all honesty that that COVID has significantly increased the types of calls we're seeing. But really, it hasn't. I do get notified when we have a COVID positive patient. So I can ensure that my people were properly PPE. So we do a little follow up. And we just fortunately, fortunately, we have not had overabundance of COVID-related transports. We've just been busy for a variety of of run-of-the-mill issues. Does that answer your question? Sometimes I just get lost talking.
No, it it does. It's it's good to know that you haven't. It hasn't affected you tremendously. I was just more curious because it's not going away anytime soon that your budget is robust enough to deal with any supplies if the CARES money will, you know, get you through the next year, or you see that there's going to be anything else.
No, the CARES money will definitely help. We we also did receive and continue to receive supplies from the National Fair Plus that have been forwarded to the state, which are then divvied up by county, which then filter their way to us. We are kind of getting down to the end of what is available. Markets are opening back up, so we're able to order off off the free market some of the supplies that we were on allocation for previously. So that is a positive. I think we're going to be okay.
Okay, great. The other question that I I have, and I know it came up through our chat, is if you could explain or Lisa explain the net revenue slash appropriations funds of the 23,000, is that, you know, we're getting extra revenue or is that just like slippage in case there's more costs? What is that 23,000?
I'm sorry, you're coming through my phone and you were really cut up, chopped up.
Okay, because there's I think there's somebody else whose mic is really on. I think people have to check that, that is making a lot of noise, background noise. So on the bottom of your EMS fund, it says net revenue and appropriations of 23,000. What is that? Is that a profit? What what is that actually?
Jamin, can you roll all the way down?
Yeah.
That would an anticipated black line item, a profit, yes.
So one thing you need to understand about EMS, that's a little different than what you'd say a general fund. Technically, it is a business-type fund. They are anticipated around a profit. You notice here, though, we're not actually budgeting any depreciation expenses in this either, which ends up being an income statement line. And you can see here, 2019 activity was $100,000. So at the end of the day, EMS is treated a little bit differently. They're considered they're considered a business-type fund. We account for it on the full accrual method, which is just accounting lingo. Whereas the General Fund is what's under modified accrual. I'm not going to get into the definitions. But again, it's it's kind of playing semantics in terms of how the dollars flow through the income statement versus balance sheet and things like that. But again, it is a business-type fund that's expected to fund sinking funds for ambulance replacement, sinking funds for equipment replacement and things like that. So it's not, it's not not normal for EMS funds to to run a profit on an annual basis.
Then that profit goes back into equipment or what happens to that profit?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. So you would actually have 123,000 at the end is basically what you're trying to say.
Yeah, if we estimated our 911 responses in terms of the numbers correctly, we've had some surprises over the last 10 years. When you'd expect a call volume to go up as it trends, then you have a year that it actually goes down. So it it's hard to know how many people are going to call 911 in any given year, but this is this is best guess.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, things go up and down. You have good years and bad years. This you have to kind of look at this no different from a utilities, stormwater, things like that, where you have to account for those years because they are their own separate fund, and they will have cost overruns here and there. They may have years that they run in the red. They may have years that they they run in the black. At the same time, At the same time, when they accumulate fund balance, again, that money can later be used to expand the EMS department, build living quarters without the city having to take on additional debt to do that as well. So again, it's it's not not normal for this to occur in any EMS.
Thank you for the great explanation. Does anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, we can go to the stormwater budget.
As I work through my massive spreadsheet, so I will stormwater again is is similar to EMS. There's a lot of ins and outs. I'll just touch on the very high level pieces here. Mainly what the rate's going to do and what the overall big changes were in the actual budget itself. But right now, we are anticipating about a six percent increase in the fee for ERU. That equates to about four dollars and sixty-four cents on an annual basis for one ERU. Which if you think of a single family home, that's one ERU. Me and my family are going to be paying four dollars and sixty-four cents more this year than we did last year. So again, it's not a major impact. We are anticipating about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar borrowing for some capital projects next year. We did see labor increases of about four and a half percent. But again, some of the new public work position does get allocated to stormwater. And then we did see some benefit elections for the employees that also get allocated to stormwater fund as well. Nonlabor, we did see increase about four point seven two percent. But the biggest change in that, and I will show you this, is this equipment replacement line. You can see historically, we had been doing twenty-one thousand three hundred. I bumped it up to thirty-five thousand for twenty twenty-one. And the reason being is because Director Abner and I went through the equipment replacement schedule in pretty significant amount of detail down here. You can see even that thirty-five thousand dollars isn't quite what it should be pulling in annually. We should be closer to forty-nine thousand dollars. But again, to avoid rate shock, we're going to step that up as time goes on. So that's one of the biggest jumps. And then obviously, stormwater is responsible for its own debt service. So you see this jump here as well, approximately ten thousand dollars. So that's the biggest change in the cost for the stormwater cost. But with the equipment replacement increase, the good news with that is all things kind of staying the way we think they're going to to stay. We should be able to replace all of these equipment replacements replacements that I just highlighted down here. Basically through twenty twenty-five to the tune of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We should be able to replace those without taking out debt for those, hopefully. So we'll see how all that works out, but that's the plan behind the equipment replacement. For and the total budget increase ended up being about four point six eight percent.
Right. Does anybody have any questions on the stormwater budget? There are none. Rodney, did you have something?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Jill, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, didn't mean to put you guys on the spot. All right, we can move on. Still, is it still on stormwater? Are we moving on to? Anything else, Jamin? I'll let you handle it.
Um, I mean, I can go through detail on the stormwater, but you can see we have some pretty significant. There's a lot in and out on the stormwater. I include an income statement and a cash statement of cash flows too for anybody that's interested. But a fair amount of work goes into this budget because it is pretty similar to what we would do for water and wastewater and things like that. I won't go through to any detail, but if you look at this and you have any questions later on, feel free to reach out to me.
Somebody have any questions, comments? All right, don't hear anything. So is there anything else that you want to present on tonight, Jamin?
Well, now we actually have to do the utilities. I don't know why that's showing up weird. May just have to pull this out separately. So if you're okay with that, council president Hirsch will move on to utilities and go through electric water and wastewater.
Yeah, it just wasn't showing up to my mind to and to find it.
Okay, with that, I will ask Director Weiss, do you want to drive? Do you want me to drive? How do you want this to go?
I'm good with you driving, Jamin. I think that if you're okay with that, that otherwise you can just turn over control to me and I've got it up as well. So I guess whoever works best for you.
That's fine. I can go through. If I miss something, just just nod.
Okay. So I did want to kind of start out and kind of lay the groundwork on as far as kind of where we're at and what we're looking at. I think Jim and I have kind of talked back and forth on a number of things. And I think one of the challenges that he brought up is that, you know, after the last three years or so, things have changed quite a bit. There was the restructure of the finance department. Bob, after thirty-eight years retired, I started. And there's, you know, now we have COVID. And so there's been a lot of things that kind of happened over the last three years. And when we look at the utility budget, it's very different from the city budget in that it's not driven by taxpayers or the tax base of the community, but it's based on our ratepayers. So we sell services, ultimately water, wastewater treatment and electricity. And that's ultimately what our budget is based on because our ratepayers ultimately pay for those services that we provide. So it is really very unique and different from the city budget in the sense that it's not really a line-by-line item kind of budget. Instead, it's more based on trends. And I think that's the challenge that kind of Jamin really highlighted is that, you know, the last three years for sure have been very unique and probably much more difficult to really, you know, trend because each year has been quite different. So when he looks at and Jamin here, jump in if I misstate anything on your behalf here at all. But it's really critical that we maintain our rates of return and cash on hand. Ultimately, we're always we are nonprofit profit and that's, you know, the wonderful thing about having municipal utility. But we also have to kind of protect that infrastructure. We've got very high dollar infrastructure that we need to maintain. And so we need to have that cash in hand to be able to make sure that we can basically pay our power bills and we can maintain our infrastructure. The other thing that's unique about us is that our rates are highly regulated. So when we need to raise our rates, because, you know, the cost of things go up, we actually have to do a filing with the Public Service Commission and they ultimately take a look at our rates and determine, you know, what they see as being able to be, say, allocated or what is a fair for us to have our customers pay for. It's really a good thing in that our rates are very regulated. They review all of our operations. The one thing though that to note, and this is particularly important and gets brought up a lot on wages, is they don't necessarily look so much on those trends of is that a correct dollar amount? Are they doing enough maintenance? Is that position paid correctly? They look at those trends and they look at percentages. So if our wages, for example, you know, dramatically change, say, stay flat for two years, three years, four years, but then jump a significant percent, they won't actually allow those that jump, all of that jump to be provided back into the into the rates. And so it's important that we constantly are looking at those trends, looking to make sure that we are budgeting correctly and that we're moving in the right direction. Again, to make sure that we're competitive and that we are our rates are, I guess, correct and that our rates actually cover all of our costs. Next slide, Jamin. So I like to kind of, you know, this is sort of how our budget is structured is we really look at it by divisions. We've got our electric division, our technical operations division, our wastewater and our water. Technical operations ultimately kind of gets split up into the other three entities. But technical operations has a lot to do with our IT, our security, as well as our customer service. So I'm going to jump actually to CIP with the CIP. Right with me here. And that's actually a line by line is in the later parts of your budget packet information. So as you go to the more to the back end of the utility part, you can actually see twenty-one through twenty-five of all of our budget, our CIP items. I'm just going to kind of give a brief overview of what those are. If you want to go line by line, we surely can, but these are kind of the highlights for twenty twenty-one. We do buy any electric train. So every other year we do tree training. That's a significant part of our budget on the electric side. That maintenance and rebuilds. Another piece of that this year is CIP budget for electric is dark fiber communications. This is something that we've been working with TDS. If we were to put in this dark fiber ourselves, it would be a couple of million dollars. And so we were able to work out with a plan with TDS to ultimately have them install the infrastructure. It will become an asset of ours, but was able to do that for reduced cost, kind of through the work that they're doing with the make ready and the aerial work that we're working with them on. On water, twenty or twenty-one, and, you know, we really had planned on, I think, worked very Brett, Rodney and myself had met a number of times, looking at really twenty twenty-one to be a planning year. With that, though, then we had the exceedance of lead. And then we in February determined that we had the grant opportunity. And so basically, a good portion of the CIP budget on the water side is really that lead service replacement and working towards that. I think there's about three point one million dollars set aside in the water budget for that. Wastewater in light of that planning year, we have much smaller projects. So we've got a camera system that we need to replace for televising our our collection systems. We really know the condition of that and also some pipelining. Like we had the INI, that water that was coming into the pipes on Main Street. So be able to do some of that pipelining as well as manual rehab. Technical operations, we've got some issues with our gates, both at wastewater and at our main building. And then also the parking lot reconstruction, basically at the administrative building there. We do show that parking lot with EMS as well. Next slide, Jamin. Jamin, can you advance the slide?
Yeah, sorry, you cut out, so I couldn't hear what you were talking about, actually.
Oh, but did I guess to that end, did everyone hear what I said regarding CIP?
Yep, I heard it.
Very good. Thank you. So as we look out beyond twenty twenty-one, I think electric and technical operations fairly straightforward. Electric division, we've continued to do our maintenance. We've got some fleet things that we need to add just for replacement schedules. We did actually push some of those out and extended those replacement schedules. Technical operations, we've got some upgraded security. We actually have some requirements coming down from EPA through DNR really to heighten our security basically at all of our facilities. And that actually ties back to our dark fiber that we're working out with TDS. And then outage management system efforts and really a lot of that outage management is we've got a SCADA system that helps us monitor all of our infrastructure. But to really take that to the next level, to be able to engage our customers and to be more effective in one observing kind of the health of the system so we can make improvements, make changes ahead of actually having an outage. And then also if we do have an outage, to be able to respond to that much more quickly, to have that automatically reach out to our text to be able to respond. But also then to be able to engage that in the future as we kind of move this forward. And outage management is probably a three-year project, but we're starting to work towards that. Where we'd actually be able to communicate with our customers and say, and they might get a text message depending how they sign up for that saying, you know, we believe that you have an outage in your area, you know, texts are responding and then be able to continue to give them updates as far as, you know, how quickly they can anticipate that outage being returned. Water and wastewater, though, really does come back to that twenty twenty-one planning year. We've had a lot of we've done a lot of capital improvements over the last several years here. And we're not able to continue to keep that pace. And so what we did is we looked at that and Rodney and Brett and I met. And it was difficult to really say, okay, which projects are taking that priority? We did some work on like trying to evaluate those and that's what we plan to do more in twenty twenty-one. In the end, what we put in there for dollars for a lot of the capital improvements for the underground infrastructure was really what Jamin recommended. We've got to make sure that our rates are reasonable for the services that we provide. And so he looked at the rates and we've then allocated dollars and really budgeted that way as opposed to having very specific projects standard for twenty-two through twenty-five. Yeah, so I'm going to kind of switch gears a little bit here in the sense that there's another piece to this. As looking at strategic alignment, I think it's something that even maybe before I started as recognized, you know, some needs that the utility had, I think I put together a hundred days and just kind of walked through the really great things. Because there's so many great things that we've got going on the utility. But wanted to take all those great things and look for the future. And there's some things I wish I had this really great like way in which I could capture all these items together and have some sort of really great statement. But just want to hit on responsible resource use and just kind of walk through. I see those visions. To me, responsible resource use is water, wastewater and ultimately we clean the clean the water to discharge to the river. Electric use, we shouldn't be, you know, using anything we don't need, but also in our people. Because our people are resources as well and we want to develop them and give them training opportunities and, you know, create an environment where that they're fulfilled as well. Leverage technology opportunities, I think this is a key piece and really kind of comes with the outage management. But it really kind of also comes down to efficiency, which is a huge part of this vision. Because there's always technical technological advances that we can make that will help ensure that we're more efficient and potentially over time be able to give us the opportunities to reduce our staff. And has customer service, customer engagement. This is huge because I think there's a couple of things. One, we want to be utility. We're the hometown utility. I mean, in the end of the day, we want our customers to know if they need something, they can reach out to us. Somewhat recently, we had door-to-door sales of solar. And we want to make sure that we're the utility where that happens and the customer calls us up and reaches out to us and has questions and trusts us to be able to provide them the information back. Create a competitive edge. What we're finding, and I think this has been true for a long time, but maybe even more so now, is finding skilled resources has been very difficult. We've been recruiting for about seven months for a journeyman lineman position in that timeframe. We got three qualified applicants. Competitive edge also is we want to be competitive with our neighboring utilities. There's actually nine municipal utilities in thirty miles as well as three investor homes. Economic responsibility, ultimately provide the best services we possibly can for the best price and build and retain strong and committed team. And always I think what underscores all of these is making sure that we're doing that efficiently. So the ways when we look at a strategic alignment is I really look at three things. And it's interesting, I had a meeting with WPPI today and they had people processes and systems. So I guess you could look at that technology piece of that system piece. These three pieces to me are kind of the buckets that make all that happen. And they almost kind of cross flow with each other. And so you need all the right pieces together to make that work effectively. So as we look at those things, you know, really it's taken into that vision. And with the changing, I'd say, environment that we have, we've got some opportunities here, particularly looking at succession planning. We've got a number of people that have over a hundred years of experience that will be retiring probably in the next one to five years. And really positioning ourselves to look at the utility, how we operate today, how we can operate in the future to meet that vision and the kind of the pieces in between. So we're looking at that vision, looking at the skill sets that we need to achieve that vision, those job descriptions, that succession planning. And in some cases with those positions that may be retiring, we don't have internal redundancies. So if that person were to walk out the door today, we don't actually have someone in place right now to be able to do exactly what they do and pick up those pieces and be able to run with it. And the recruitment and retention. Again, you know, I spoke to those that that position being open and really only getting three qualified candidates. Unfortunately, that isn't just with journeyman alignment. Working with Forester Engineering, they've been recruiting engineering, excuse me, electrical engineers for a while. And they're having trouble also feeling. So it's really an industry utility wide issue. And then retaining our good people. So this is basically, this is the org chart. When I started, it's still true today. We do have some vacancies on here, but we're a team of twenty-four at this point in time. Excited. Why I kind of bring this up is that I think this really underscores kind of the tradition of the utility. In nineteen ninety-one, we had a team of actually twenty-eight. And at that point in time, the population was about eight thousand nine hundred. And at that point in time, the population was about 8,900. This actually percentage is wrong on here. The city population actually has increased 48% and our staff has decreased 14% during that time. And that's a direction that we want to, you know, manage, managed, but potentially continue to move towards. So the strategic alignment really does come down, taking a look at those, those skillsets, our job descriptions. Planning for the future, setting ourselves up to be successful, given the fact that we know that we've got very highly skilled people that are going to be moving on to another phase of their life and believe in the utility. And then recruitment and retention of those good people that will help support the future of the utility. I guess the one piece too is, you know, there's a little bit of time, I think, that's going to need to happen between, you know, say where we're here today. And where that vision totally comes together. But where we see that right now is that we're a team of 24 would anticipate that we will be, you know, at some point in time, 24 to 22 team, depending on how things work out. But we're definitely not looking to add staff by any of this strategic alignment. So in the budget, there is monies for strategic alignment and had the opportunity, actually talked to a couple of different people. But the mayor and I talked about this quite a bit of the chicken or the egg. And I think it's a very valid point is, you know, do you put the plan together and then get the monies to do the plan? Or do you put the monies there and then create the plan? I guess that was my concern is that I really want to make sure that we have dollars available to start the plan. I didn't want to get into a situation, we start a plan, we get only so far, but we run into the idea that, well, there's not monies for it. So we must stop this work and set it aside. I don't think we have that kind of time. I think it's important that we start to move this direction now. There is a fair amount of monies in the budget for this effort. But none of these monies, other than 2% standard living adjustment that was, you know, that has already been recommended for the city. That would be also for the utility. When we did our market adjustment in 2020, we did have some individuals, and this is what the good standing adjustment refers to. We did have some individuals that were under discipline, that did not actually receive that market adjustment. They would be eligible as long as they stay in good standing to get that adjustment starting January 1 of 2021. So there is dollars in for the budget to achieve that as well. Those items would be part of the budget would approve, would have happened January 1. The dollars though, for the other, other three things, the third-party consultant review, the succession planning mentoring, market adjustments, recruitment, retention would all go through additional reviews and approvals before any of those dollars were spent. So as we look at this, so, you know, come basically if this is approved through the budget, January 1, the 2% wage increases, the good standing adjustments would happen January 1. Everything else is in the future and there's a timeframe laid out here in the next slide. Sorry, get with me here for a second. Okay. So the first thing that we're really need to do, and we've started to do this internally, is to look at the current job descriptions. Sadly, I would say that, well, every single job description we have is outdated, even the journeyman lineman position, which should be a relatively stagnant as far as you know, the skillset should be very straightforward. Unfortunately, that job description is outdated as well. So start working with Director Gillingham and reviewing all of those job descriptions. Once those are reviewed, work with the utilities committee and then also the personnel committee. Once that has been established, as far as the direction that would, they would approve to go forward with. Director Gillingham would then work to obtain a third-party consultant that would be reviewed ultimately by personnel. Once that, that third-party consultant was selected, then they would go through that process of reviewing all the information. What they came back with, within the go-to-the utilities committee, personnel and finance and council for review and approval. And then we can move on to the recruitment piece. All these things, you know, really are led by Director Gillingham through, through human resources. So that we can actually follow a process to move this forward. So any questions related to any of that? That's actually my last slide.
Am I, am any questions for Jill? Our Director Gillingham with respect to these proposals?
No, I've been working with Jill on this, so I'm well aware of what's going on, we're on the same page.
Excellent. Anybody else? Okay, we can move forward, thanks Jill.
Thank you.
So Council President Hirsch, you were at the utilities committee meeting. This is also, I think, discussed up personnel. I can certainly go through the same spiel I did at utilities if you feel that's useful here.
Sure, I think for the people that weren't in that committee, that would be great.
Okay. I think I'm just going to bounce back to my spreadsheets because it's always easier. You know, Jill laid out kind of the overall plan very nicely, but it's hard to kind of see exactly what that means in terms of dollars and cents and overall impact. So the individual utilities quickly, but if you have any questions, just, you know, feel free to interrupt me at any time. But I'll just, I'll just kind of keep moving unless somebody jumps in. So the first one I'll go through is electric. Again, Jill kind of touched on it that we have a couple benchmarks that we look at. One is the rate of return, which is the sign here that I just shaded. You can see the green here, the green represents kind of the forecast. So right now, the way we budgeted with the strategic alignment wages is we just threw everything in, assuming effective 1121. Obviously, as Jill just presented, this is going to take time, there's additional approvals needed. So we're probably budgeted high on the expenditure side. But it's for simplicity sake, for overall planning purposes, we just to see where we would shake out in terms of rate of return and unreserved cash. So just looking at 2021 here, I'm going to highlight this. You see, okay, mind, this is a forecast. Utilities are a victim of weather. So you never know, could be really, really hot, could be really, really mild. So you never really know, so we do budget a little bit conservatively. But right now in 21, we're anticipating a 2%. Probably not going to happen again because we budgeted high, assuming a 1121 date with all which we know isn't going to happen. But then you can see in 22, 23 and on, we start bringing that back up as things level off. And the staffing turns into what it is ultimately going to be with strategic planning. So again, 2% probably not going to be there. At the end of the day, we'll probably be a little bit higher than that. The other item we look at is cash flows. Again, we have this unrestricted months on hand, usually shoot for between three and five months worth of revenue. So again, that's kind of the goal, we try to stay between that number. Again, 2021, we're for four and a quarter months of unrestricted cash on hand at year end. So we're, we're right within that window that we'd like to be internally. This is one that I think everybody cares about in terms of rate increases. Again, this is just a forecast, but right now I'm not anticipating any major increases until 2024. And again, even at that point, we're estimating about three and a quarter percent, depending how, how things turn out. You know, you lose a business, something like that, you may have to go in and adjust kind of inflationary. One to 2%, something like that. But at the end of the day, I'm not anticipating any major rate increases on the electric side of things. And then obviously we have to keep an eye on debt coverage. And debt coverage, we have, we have to be at this 1.3 mark. Again, we're anticipating, we're going to be well above that every single year. And then in 2023, one of the debt issues drop. Any on the electric side, so you see that debt coverage drop pretty significantly in 2020. I like graphs, so I like to throw these together. You can kind of see where we've been trending in terms of operation and maintenance costs. So the red line represents historical information. Forecast, obviously. 2021, you see this big spike, but again, the majority of that relates to $175,000 in tree trimming. We are doing some admin building, blacktop resurfacing. The strategic alignment, all of the changes that Jill just talked about, that actually equates to about $199,000 potentially. Again, all but one, probably not going to be the case. We still have to go through all the steps and proper approvals. But you can see after 2021, then things level back off. And we kind of fall back in line with what the historical trends have been. Capital expenditures, again, the red is historic. Blue is forecasted, the big jumps here in 17 and 18 that stationed out by Kettle Park West. Jump, but again, everything kind of levels off after that. Electric's actually pretty The graph to the right here is payment in lieu of taxes. Again, anytime you add plant capital assets, that's going to go up. And you see a kind of a steady increase following suit with the, the average annual capital expenditures there. The last graph I'll touch on is kind of the sales and kilowatt hours, this graph over here. You can see through September 30th on about 3%. Again, you can see why I said utilities are a victim of the weather. Cause it, you know, you're, you're way, way back up. So we are seeing that decrease going forward, forecasting 21 through 25. I kind of leveled off and then just had some very, very slight increases. Things like that, just to be So that is the electric impact of everything. I'll talk a little bit about water here. Again, right now, water is allowed a 5% rate of return. In 2020, we're anticipating about 4.06%. In 21, we're anticipating about 3.27%. If we work our way down, you can see right now with the lead service project, we're going to have multiple scenarios with this. We're still working through all of this, we're working with others to basically build out different scenarios. Right now, I kind of built in the most likely scenario at this point, assuming that the grant is there for the, the private side of things. We position I have to borrow the entire amount for the $3.1 million project. So right now, I'm just forecasting what I think we may need to borrow at this point, which is $2.2 million. Dollars, some marching orders to basically put together some different scenarios, assuming maybe the grant funding isn't there. Maybe we have to borrow the entire $3.1 million. So you're all going to see the number of times before everything is finalized. But right now, this is just kind of working off the best information we have. So that's the biggest thing going on with water. Unrestricted months on hand, you can see what I meant by that we've positioned ourselves well to maybe not have to borrow the entire amount. So you can see we're anticipating about eight months worth. And again, the goal is three to five months. Then you can see that kind of start working its way down. Again, I left a bit of a buffer here in the out years where you see 4.96 again, A, it's a forecast and B, we're still not sure exactly how this lead service project is going to shake out. So I wanted to leave us a little bit of a window there to play with. Overall rate increases, so anytime you have a big project like that, when you're talking about adding $3 million in asset. The water utility is regulated by the Public Service Commission and we're required to maintain a certain level of rate of return. So when you talk about adding $3 million in asset, you have to earn a 5% rate of return on that or stay pretty close. See with this impact, we're anticipating about 3%, what I would call a simplified increase in rates in 2021. That will probably take a factor on April 1st, May 1st, depending on when we get all of our reporting done. But then in 2022, you can see a big loan, that's just an estimate right now. It all depends on how big this project actually turns out. How many assets we, how much in assets we put in the ground and what we actually pull out. So again, there's a number of variables looking around a 14% increase in 2022. Other 5% increase out to cover all of this. Debt coverage, water has to worry about. Again, they have the same coverage requirement as electric. And you can see we're well above that for the foreseeable future, so no major concerns there. Debt coverage. Going back to the graphs, you can see here, water is, I mean, consistent-ish historically. If you look at the red lines, blue kind of follows that trend. You see some kind of big jumps up and down, depending on the year that's actually happening. In terms of the strategic alignment impact and the other things that Joe was previously speaking about, that's about a $13,000 impact. Assuming a 1121 implementation. Some of these spikes you see it, you know, a $50,000 well, four and six rehab, 25 rehab in 24, so that's why you kind of see the ups and lows going out into the future for water operating. Expenditures, again, you can see the 2021 spike, that's, that's the project. That's the lead service project. And then as Jill alluded to, 2022, we're really off the gas and see how every, see where all the chips fall and then we'll, we'll adjust from there. Payment in lieu of taxes, again, that's slow and steady. To actually add in capital assets, that's what the actual pilot is, is calculated on. And then in 2022, you see the big jump because that'll be based on the 2021 project that you do. And then the last one I'll touch on is just the sales and gallons. You can see historically, we've had some pretty significant drops between 18 and 19. We kind of leveled off, looks like we're kind of where we're going to be for the foreseeable future. Through September 30th, we're down right around and see I dropped it a little bit for 2020, and then I just leveled it off. Sewer is a little different, we don't have to worry about a rate of return, they're not regulated by the PSC. So really all it comes down to is cash flow and unreserved cash, cash on hand. So in terms of wastewater, cash on hand, again, unrestricted months on hand, we want to stay between that three and five number. We had been building up here, as you can see in these few years that I just shaded. It, there's plans for some possible treatment plant requirements, some treatment plant work. That has been pushed back now, so the utilities decided to spend on that reserve, spend on those reserves a little bit and do some collection system work, which they've been doing, been able to tag along with what the city's been doing the last couple of years. So you can see we, we drop here a little bit below that 3%, but again, it's a forecast. We haven't seen a full year impact of this 4.78% increase. So we, we want to hover around that three to five month, you know, give or take. But wastewater, we on some projects, we need to, if we actually fall below this. Rate increases, again, we did just implement a 4.78% increase this summer. And we are staggering 5% increases beginning with 2022 and then into 2024. And we will continue to, you know, evaluate this on an annual basis. Wastewater does have to worry about debt coverage as well. Again, their coverage requirement is a little bit lower because they are clean water fund loans. So they're required. And you can see for the foreseeable future, we'll be well above that as well too. So then one thing we'll just need to keep an eye on over the, the next few years is this unrestricted cash on hand. And again, we can pull back on some things if we need to. Overall, operation and maintenance, you can see some big jumps up to 2015, but then we leveled off. And they've been pretty slow and steady decreasing with some increases beginning in 19 and continuing. The big 2021 jump here is mainly due to the admin building blacktop project. And then the strategic alignment cost is anticipated to be about $38,000. Again, I'll say it again, that's assuming 1121, probably not going to be the case. So then in 22, we level back off. It's 2025, jump down here, you can see there's a lot of work that's planned just from an expenditure side of things, not so much CIP. So we have a system study, a facility study, and then a 75,000 hour wastewater treatment parking lot project. So that's why that big jump in 2025 is there. You can see we've had some pretty busy years compared to 2015 through 2018, so 19, 20, some big expenditure years. Again, knowing what we just kind of leveled off, a little bit, you know, some spikes here and there, but for the most part, this all averages out for the next five years. Sales and gallons, so through September 30th, 2020, we're actually up 7% on the wastewater side of things. Again, to be conservative, I'm not assuming we're going to continue to grow by 7%. So I just level that off for 21 through 2025. So again, I know it's a lot to take in, but I think everybody was kind of curious what the overall impact would be on rates. And hopefully that all made sense, but Jill or I can certainly answer any questions. If not, I'll have her kind of go through the CIP information.
I just have one question.
Sure, Sid, go for it.
And that is, when, when can we expect to hear about the grant for the lead, lead pipe? I, I thought we had, I thought that was pretty sure, but I, I thought we had, I thought that was pretty sure, but
We, we think it may be pretty sure, but until it's in hand, I are reluctant to get too excited. Everything we continue to hear, even some questions we had kind of from contingency plans related to what if we didn't get the grant with the DNR, even the response was positive, kind of may, you know, that there's a pretty good probability that we will. The grant is actually due November fifteenth, so we're gearing up to actually submit that. But now we're finding that we won't actually know until January. We had hoped we would have actually turned around very quickly. It does put us in a position then to be looking to immediately, as soon as we know one way or the other on the grant. Because by January, a lot of CIP projects are out for a variety of different communities. And if DNR is successful and if they get a lot of applications, they may have sixty three million dollars or so that they may be putting out in grants. Maybe competing with other communities that would be looking to do this lead replacement work as well.
And what percentage is that grant on the total cost, Jill?
Percentage, oh, well, so the total cost, I guess, ways to look at that is there's, you know, when we replace the lead services private side. So the public side would be a hundred percent paid for by the grant. The, the private side, I'm not sure if I said that correctly. The private side is a hundred percent paid for by the grant. The public side, we would have to fund through the utility. And that's what Jimin's got referenced here is two million because of the cash on hand that we have. But I think we budgeted, if you look at the CIP, I think there we've got three point two actually showing in the CIP for that work.
So we're not getting any money for the actual student utilities. Goes to private.
That's correct.
I just want to review it. Thank you.
Perfect.
Does anybody else have any questions for Jill or Jamin? All right, hearing none, let's continue on.
Sorry, Jill, my mouse is being a little weird.
Okay. And I don't know if everybody wants me to go through the line items of the CIP. I kind of did a high level overview in the presentation. I surely can. But except to, if you'd like me to, I surely can.
Say, may I have a preference? They're all muted. So it's up to you, Jill. What would you like to do?
I, I can. I must admit, it's, I'm going to honestly be reading line for line, but I'm more than happy to do that. So you know, this kind of highlighted some of the big items that we would have for this year, obviously on water, it's the lead service. Water and wastewater out, you know, beyond twenty twenty one. For the most part, we pretty much didn't allocate a street project or specifically say this is the underground infrastructure we're going to replace. It was more, these are the dollars that, you know, to maintain rates as we, as Jimin has laid them out, these are the dollars that we have available to use. So water wastewater, I think, you know, twenty two through twenty five, there's going to be some changes there as we, you know, I meet with Rodney and Brett and we kind of take a look at what we can do together. And there may be a situation also, if the city, you know, continues at the same pace they had been, we just may have to choose like we did on Main Street to not go for some of that underground replacements. You know, we did choose to not do water wastewater under Main Street, just because financially, we really couldn't afford to do that, along with the other CIP projects that we were doing. On the electrical side, it's pretty much maintenance. There is like in twenty twenty two, we actually had pushed off some of the fleet purchases that were actually aligned to be set for being in twenty nineteen. Just didn't see the, you know, the condition of those vehicles such that two. Otherwise, a lot of the things too, also in the CIP that you see, we do five year now this year, we didn't do this on water and wastewater because we didn't find that there was enough changes happening. But that every five years, we do do a system study and we take a look at, okay, this is the system needs. And that also helps facilitating for us to move a direction to make sure that we're maintaining or replacing the infrastructure that we need to.
Okay. Great. Still, anybody, any questions? They're still all muted. So you must be explaining everything well.
Everybody's napping.
And this is important stuff. Is there anything else you want to cover, Jill?
I guess, I have one other thing I guess I would throw out is probably in the technical operations, going to pieces that you tend to see is we are working through the outage management system and that's kind of a significant undertaking and that's not going to all happen in one year. You know, we've got very good maps at this point in time. And we've got a SCADA system, which ultimately is basically there's technology at each of our facilities that reports back very specific information to us. And so we can use that information to really establish the health of the system. And it's really taking that mapping, that, that technology piece of like reporting back the health of the system and then taking those and being able to really predict outages. So when we have an outage, to be able to respond back. So that communication will also come in and say, yep, we've got something occurring here. It'll predict the device back. The goal is that, a couple of things that, that, that really creates for us incredibly efficiency as far as getting that information to our techs real time, quickly get them, you know, rolling their trucks to be able to address that outage. That information that comes back to us also helps us make changes. So possibly depending on modes and otherwise, we may be able to take a look at something and actually prevent an outage. Additionally, it's a customer engagement tool. And I think that's really important going forward. And it's so much of what are the investor owned utilities? And so there are some municipals are doing at this point in time, but it's definitely the direction that we really need to go. Because we all look at our phones and think, you know, this is going to give me all the information in the world. And so it does engage our customers at another level. And so they can keep aware of, you know, do we want to go out? Because we're not going to get our power back on for, you know, three hours. And so if we're going to go and do this, maybe at Grandma's house or, you know what? It looks like our power is going to be restored here very shortly. So we'll stay and we'll just hang out and wait for that to be restored. So another piece that will be, you'll be hearing more and more about over the next couple of years as we roll that out. Also, technical operations with that dark fiber that we talked about. There'll be added pieces. Eventually, we'll be needing to add cameras and a variety of different things because we've got a resiliency risk management report that we need to file ultimately with EPA and also emergency response planning. And again, all those pieces are part of that to make sure that we are protecting the infrastructure that we have.
Excellent. Look forward to that.
Along with future, I'm going to add dark fiber to terms that I am amused by.
I just have an observation and that is, we're talking about some rate, rate increases going over ten percent for customers. And so I, I think transparency in this period, especially twenty one, is going to be really important. Because I, you know, people, people are surprised sometimes when they get a bill that's ten percent higher. I would just advise Jill to be as transparent as possible and get that information out early. So people aren't surprised. Is that, because we're talking about some significant rate increases.
You're absolutely right, Sid, and I appreciate that. I appreciate you sharing that because that's the one thing I think about the lead work that we're proposing to do. It is a significant, you know, it is going to cause rate increases ultimately. The other side of it though, without that DNR monies, we would really still be in the same position. We would need to buy DNR. We know going forward with the EPA regulations that are coming, we will never pass our lead testing in the future. So we will need to do some additional studies at a relatively high cost and start treating the water, which is long term cost. Plus also repair, replacing this infrastructure at seven percent a year. So we had planned, you know, if this grant hadn't come forward, we actually had a fifteen year plan to really address this. So it might push off that one big year over a longer period of time, but that would ultimately cost more over that period of time. Because we'd be doing two things, we'd be replacing all this infrastructure, but also in that process, also having to treat the water because we couldn't remove all the lead at one time. But Sid, I really appreciate your insight there and you're absolutely right. We should be making sure that we're very clear that as much as this grant money is really man from heaven and really puts us in a great position, it, it, there is going to be costs, you know, on the rates that ultimately will cause.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other questions for Jill? Hearing none, we can move forward.
Thank you.
Trying to look at the agenda. Oops, that going up. So we're just on to future agenda items?
Yes, and I will leave that up to you folks to discuss tonight if you want to. Based on what I've heard, the last two meetings, I haven't heard any actual changes to the budget, a couple of suggestions to kind of run the flowers on Main Street through the proper committees. Look a little bit more into a hundred percent renewable slash choose renewable, run that through the proper committees. If we need to, we'll tap into contingency next year. But other than that, I don't think there's any pending changes. So I'll, you know, obviously a couple outstanding items and some other things if you want to weigh into them in terms of what we've set aside for contingency, wage increases and public works position. But at this point, I'll leave it up to you if you think the ten twenty nine meeting is necessary or not.
What are people's thoughts? Is there anything else? Brett, did you have something you were going to say?
I think that this process went, went better when we moved the, the hiring positions piece back into personnel and push that up as a recommendation versus discussing it at, within this committee. I thought that that made things go a lot smoother this time. Because I know we had quite a bit of back and forth last year about that.
I agree. It was kind of an ugly situation, which I didn't, I didn't like being put on that spot.
And I agree, we, you know, we sacrificed time for personnel to, to assist with the rest of the committee of the whole. So I think that was a great, a great idea, coming from, I'm not completely sure, but I think largely through AJ. So I appreciate that.
Regina, if we do not hold the second meeting or the final meeting, I believe that we would need a recommendation to council tonight to approve the budget.
Okay. Um, before we do that, Greg, does anybody else have any comments? Jamin, are we okay with the budget? Do we need to make any cuts or changes to get us balanced?
As of right now, we don't. The two big outstanding items would be obviously the SRO. If that position doesn't get approved, we may need to make, make some tweaks. Again, I think we would, we'd have to do that at the council level. And any changes that happen between now and then, which would really only be the SRO. And if for some reason, the union contract is completed by then and the wage change is different. Those would be the two biggest things that we'd have to worry about in the meantime. But again, I don't think either one of those are going to be decided by next Thursday.
Jamin?
So they're, yeah.
I do have the union negotiations scheduled for next week, Wednesday, the twenty eighth.
Okay.
So we should have a decision on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, probably not enough time to do a ten twenty nine meeting. I, I think, I think that any changes we have, I'm assuming won't be material. So I really think we could probably work through this at the council level on the ten. But again, I'll leave that up to you.
No, I, I, I think Greg, barely hear you. Greg, you have to speak up.
Is it better?
Little bit.
It's better? Okay. I was just going to say that, given that that meeting is only going to be one day before the, the final meeting, I think we could handle it easily in council. So I would recommend that we forego that and make a motion to send it forward to council with the recommendation to approve.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any other, the only thing is if AJ gets that union contract and it's not what we're expecting, do you think that we have to have a, we might need to have a special meeting? Or do you think that we could handle it in council?
Personally, I think we can handle it in council.
Okay. AJ?
I agree. I don't see this, it's purely financial and based on what we're seeing in other cities, it's right in line with what we're giving for an increase for our employees. The wild card will be that they're more than likely looking for a two year contract, but we don't have to settle with the two year contract.
Okay.
It's to our advantage that we do it, but if we don't, we don't.
Okay.
In council, would that be a, would that be at a closed session discussion because it's personnel related?
No, we're not talking about specific individuals. So there'd be no reason to go into closed.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other discussions with respect to the motion that Greg put on the floor?
Could you repeat the motion, please? I didn't hear it.
So, go ahead, Greg.
The motion is to recommend a council approval of the twenty twenty one budget.
So Sid, what it is, is that we're, instead of having a meeting next Thursday, we basically covered everything. And so instead of having that meeting, we're just going to go right to council to approve this budget.
Good idea.
Any other discussions? All in favor, everybody unmute yourself so you can say aye or nay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So we won't see your friendly faces next Thursday evening, but we'll wait till it comes to full council.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, can everybody say second at once? That was great.
Third.
Are ready to leave. Thank you all, the directors, for sticking through this long night. Thank you, Jamin, for your excellent presentations and data gathering and presentation. And everybody else that contributed, AJ, Jill, James, Josh, I think of the chief, Lisa, Rodney, Brett, trying to find you all, the mayor, obviously. Thank you all.
I have, I have a point of order again, Regina.
What? I'm talking
We have to, we have to vote on adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.